Seven o'clock, okay. I'll call the meeting to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Welcome to the August 28th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Milford Board of Education. And we have a roll call, please, Ms. Griffin.
Adam DeYoung.
Here.
Catherine Ailing.
Here.
Megan Doyle.
Here.
Andrew Fowler.
Here.
Tracy Erby.
Here.
Emily McDonough Souza.
Here.
Gary Pellicetti.
Here.
Una Petrowski.
Ms. Petrowski is excused.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Here.
And Susan Glennon.
Here.
Nine members present. Thank you. Please let the record show that Ms. McDonough Souza is remote tonight. All right, do we have any members of the public here that would wish to make a public comment? We see none, I'll dispense with the public comment statement, and we will move on to item four, approval of the working agreement between the Connecticut Association of Labor Unions and the Milford Education of Education Secretaries and the Milford Board of Education. Who has that?
I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the working agreement between the Connecticut Association of Labor Unions, CA-LU number three, Milford Association of Education Secretaries, M-A-E-S, and the Milford Board of Education, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pellicetti is seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Adam DeYoung.
Yes.
Catherine Ailing.
Yes.
Megan Doyle.
Yes.
Andrew Fowler.
Yes.
Tracy Erby.
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza.
Yes.
Gary Pellicetti.
Yes.
Una Petrowski is not here. Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Yes.
And Susan Glennon.
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Attorney Dudas.
Thank you, Ms. Dudas.
Okay, Chair's report. I'd like everybody to note that we have two dates coming up in October, October 4th and October 18th, set aside for community conversations. Locations and details will be determined shortly, but I just wanted everybody to put the dates on your calendar. And just a reminder that we revert back to our regular schedule starting next month. We have our business meeting on the 12th of September, and our committee of the whole meeting will be Tuesday in September, the 27th, because of Monday being the end of Young Kipper. And I just want to welcome everybody back from the summer break. Convocation's tomorrow, so teachers will start up, and everybody's going to jump right in, so be ready. Do we have any liaison reports? Mr. Fowler.
Thank you. So the Permanent Schools, Facilities, Building Committee met a couple of times over the summer. We met last Thursday, the 24th. Took another tour of Pumpkin Delight. The new wings are still being worked on, which includes the new gym, science, and media center. But all the classrooms were done. Bathrooms were mostly finished when we toured the other day, but they put up temporary partitions. There's still, there's an issue with this thing called the rock ledge, which the contractors have to do test pits for to put a water line from over the road to the back of Pumpkin Delight. So we'll wait and see on that. And the foreign roof project is going extremely well. That's it.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports from board members? Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you.
Good evening.
I'm so grateful. I sat down and I turned to both Sean and Steve. I said, "It feels so complete." The band is together, and it's just so exciting when you can put a team together. And I'm grateful to have the opportunity to introduce to you some individuals that will be key leaders in our work in bringing to completion and moving forward in this board's mission and vision, goals, and commitments. So I'd like to start actually with a familiar face. This Amy Farady is coming back to Milford. Amy first took her job as a teacher in Milford at Joseph A. Foran High School way back in 2011. Come on, not that old guy. All right, a little whiles ago. During her five years as a science teacher at Foran, she served on many, many committees and work groups and really contributed to the work of the district. Some of that work included curriculum writing and several student assistance and advisory teams. Unfortunately, Amy made a decision to go to North Branford in 2016. She regretted it the entire time, I assure you. And she left us to join the North Branford Public Schools, high school team there, where she spent five years. During that time, she transitioned into the role of a K-12 science leader and instructional technology coach for the district. In 2021, Amy became the assistant principal of East Haven High School and served as an active partner to students, staff, and families there. She was deeply involved in the development of student-centered programming and activities, including the creation of an advanced manufacturing program, the development of a ninth-grade intervention program, and working with families of ninth-grade students to keep them on track. She also was involved in the development of credit recovery program for students needing additional assistance. So just from some of the highlights from her resume, you can see why we really need her in Milford. These are some next steps for us, and we are already benefiting from Amy's knowledge and skill set. And I just cannot wait to see how Amy will continue to help us move forward in our goals. So welcome aboard, back. Welcome back, Amy.
Thank you so much. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you.
It's okay to move on. So we had a unique situation at law that we were hiring two assistant principals at the same time. And so we were looking for the yin and the yang, the dynamic duo that will support and assist Mr. Brian Darcy. So our second selection as assistant principal at Jonathan Law is Lindsay Solzicki. Welcome, Lindsay. In 2011, Lindsay got her start in education set as a school psychologist at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School and later at Tyrrellville High School in Plymouth. Her work there centered on designing and implementing behavior intervention plans targeted for specific student needs. In 2019, Lindsay was appointed the Director of Pupil Personnel Services for the Plymouth Public School District. And while there, she was responsible for the hiring, supervision, and evaluation of the PPS team across 10 disciplines. In that role, she collaborated with a wide variety of local agencies, including the Department of Children and Families and the local police department. She took a new role in 2021 as the assistant principal of Ox Ridge Elementary School in the Darien Public School System. Her work there included development of bullying prevention plans and the implementation of student discipline procedures using responsive classroom model and restorative practices. So you could see the beautiful yin and yang that we have in this dynamic duo. What Lindsay brings to us, I'm so incredibly looking forward to how she will continue to develop the culture and climate at law to make it an even more strong community. So welcome aboard, Lindsay. I'm so excited about this next announcement. Not that it gets like brand-new news. I have a very personal investment in this young woman. My time with her goes way back to Fairfield. So our careers have gone like this over the last decade. So I'm just so incredibly proud to announce that Amy Rizzo began her career here. Oh, sorry, sorry, all right, let me start over. Amy Rizzo, did not start here, is the new principal of JFK Elementary School. Sorry, I got so caught up in my emotion in that. So Amy actually began her career as an English-language arts teacher in Fairfield back in 2002. And she held that position for 11 years. In 2013, Amy moved into the role of elementary library and media specialist within the Fairfield School District, where she again served as a leader in multiple district-wide initiatives while performing in her school setting at the same time. And then with tears in Fairfield, we saw her go in 2016, where she came here to Milford Public Schools, first starting as a media specialist at Matheson Elementary School, and shortly thereafter, in 2019, just moving her way up in leadership roles. First starting in the role of teacher leader for instructional technology for the district. Her leadership played a crucial role, I want to emphasize, crucial role, at the onset of COVID-19, working with key district administrators to immediately and successfully convert our school district into a completely remote academic environment. In her role in instructional technology, she really made it happen for us behind the scenes. She provided support to students and staff endlessly, 24/7. She was there for everybody. So we thought she did such a great job in that role, we thought we'd give her another role. And Amy was appointed to the role of teacher leader for professional learning in 2021, where she accelerated her work in the district's model for high-quality instruction. Not only did she take on HQI, but she took on the New Teacher Academy, the TEAM Program, the PK-12 Master Based Diploma Experience, and facilitated numerous professional development and evaluation committees. I am so incredibly proud to be able to share that Amy is already hit the ground running in July. When I said, "Do you want to wait a couple of, three weeks? Give yourself a vacation or get through HQI?" She goes, "No, I want to start tomorrow." In fact, I'm going to start while I'm on a trip to Europe, right? Amy is a well-known face, a longstanding community member. Not only is she an employee of Milford Public Schools or a very active parent of children here in the system who are present. She was president of the CAFPEN Medal PTA. So in addition to full-time jobbing, she has been contributing to her community for many, many years. And I'm so grateful that she has stepped into this role as principal. I'm so grateful. So today is the first day of Steve Autieri's job, on the job as Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. So grateful that after 13 years, Steve has decided to pick us as his home as Assistant Superintendent. So Steve began his personal educational trek in the area of science, earning his Bachelor of Science degree in Biology from King's State College in 2003. He continued in the discipline, receiving a Master of Science degree in Cell and Molecular Biology from the University of Rhode Island in 2008. But he got a taste of teaching. In 2008, he served as an adjunct professor of Health Sciences at Goodwin University in East Hartford, and he began to consider education as a possible future career and looked for a way to combine his love for science and his newfound love of teaching. So finding a way to do both, he earned a Master's degree in education, the area of curriculum instruction, worked in the educational field for a few years, knew this combination was a perfect career path for him, and decided to continue his pursuit of education. Received a six-year certificate, O-92, from Southern Connecticut, followed by a Connecticut Superintendency Certificate from UConn, and is currently working on his doctorate. Fingers crossed he'll be done in 2024. So Steve's formal entrance into the field of education began in 2010 at East Haven High School, serving as science teacher and administrative intern for the district. In 2015, he moved to South Carolina with his family for a short one-year stay. We're glad he came back. While there, he continued to hone his craft as a teacher and an administrative intern at the Academy for Technology and Academics in Conway, South Carolina. Returning to Connecticut in 2016, Steve joined the Suffolk Public School System, serving as a district's science curriculum leader for grades 6 through 12. In 2018, the culmination of all his experiences as a professional educator came together when he took on the role of Director of Curriculum Instruction for the Stafford Public Schools. And 2022, he was promoted to the role of Chief Academic Officer for Stafford Public Schools. So I could go on for a couple more minutes about Steve. His resume is quite impressive. He is highly respected and is a prolific author of 10 scholarly works. He was most recently published in American Biology: Teacher and the European Journal of Science and Mathematics Education. And the release of his doctoral dissertation proposal at UConn, which I'm particularly going to be very interested in, as many others, I believe, in the state of Connecticut, will be focused on the examination of critical strategies to support the retention of educators of color in Connecticut. And we're hoping that he can complete that in the coming year. There are, after we appointed Steve, I received numerous emails and phone calls from colleagues in the state. And in addition to the accolades of his skill set and knowledge, I think what rises to the top for me, which is critically important, particularly in Milford, since we emphasize the relationships. Over and over, I heard, "You could not have hired a nicer guy." That his kindness and the way he relates and works with people was the first thing individuals would comment about when I called for formal references, but also those that were unsolicited. So I am so grateful to have Steve as part of our team. He brings the foundation of relationships and people, students and staff first, and then a long, long, long resume and incredible skill set and knowledge. So welcome, Steve. And that's it for the introduction administrator. So administrators can go home and do homework. It's an early morning for all of us. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
See you in the morning. And I'd like to move on to the instructional highlights of the evening.
Yes, please.
So board members, Emily, in August, we give you a brief highlight of the busy work that we've been attentive to this summer. It's funny, because on a day like today, we get a lot of comments like, "Welcome back." We haven't been, we didn't go anywhere. We didn't go anywhere. We're grateful. Summer is a time where we can get some deep level of work done, particularly in the area of curriculum. And I just want to get ahead of the message in that we believe curriculum, this is a reminder for those who have been around some and those who have not heard this message, that curriculum is best developed, written, formulated, implemented by our teachers, our professionals. We don't have to hire or purchase programs from California or Wisconsin or fill-in-the-blank state or even country. We have a group of professionals here who have been trained for this. And we have teachers who are very, very interested in skill in the area of writing curriculum, writing implementation guides. And it's our job as a system to support all teachers to implement that. We have a great system and cycle for evaluation, review, development, and implementation. And we stretch that over the course of six, seven years. And we've had to make some adjustments because of COVID. Some years, we can be much more aggressive. I think that's a word, actually, that one of the board members asked at one point during Brother Father. That seems aggressive. We can be, in some years, much more aggressive and some years have to pull back. So this summer felt like a nice balance. The first slide of our highlight this evening provides a summary of the three big portions of the curriculum cycle, and that is the writing cycle, the program review cycle, and the implementation cycle. These do not represent one-year cycles. Particularly, program review usually takes a couple of years. Implementation is the longer stretch, three to four years. Writing cycle, we try to do that within a year or two, depending on the heavy lift. It may look different at the elementary, it may look different at the high school, depending on how many electives we have at the high school, how many grades we try to rewrite in the elementary. So this has been the work we've started this summer. It is not complete, complete. So we have both summertime writing and revision of curriculum, but we also have it as it stretches through the year. That can be done through release time for teachers, for being paid additional hours to work. We also have the benefit of doing some digital, remote work when it comes to revising curriculum that teachers are compensated for. So we have a combination of summer, pull-out, and then additional hours throughout the school year. So you'll see that all areas are represented here in the curriculum cycle. All grade levels are represented here. And this is just a summary of what we've already started and hope to accomplish throughout the school year. Now, our big professional learning experience for the summer, which is the anchor for what everything is tied to, is our HQI Live experience. We're happy that we celebrated season four this year. That's one of my favorite pictures ever. Someone actually put it on a little board for me, and it's sitting in my office now. I'm so incredibly proud of the number of participants we've reached. So as a reminder, in year one, we had all administrators plus two teachers from each building. So we were able to expose this experience of 28 teachers in year one. Year two, we doubled that. We're around the 50 mark. Year three, I said a crazy thing. I said, "Let's hit 100," and we hit 100. And this number, I don't know if it's completely accurate. I've heard 130, 150, 170. Today, I heard 186. And I think the reason why that number fluctuates is because there were so many hands on deck this year to make it happen, that people weren't just counting individuals who were sitting in the seat as quote-unquote "participants," but it takes our entire IT department to pull this off. It takes number of food service individuals to pull this off. It takes custodial staff. It takes administrators. It takes teachers. And I'm happy to share, I think it's this next slide. Nope, maybe another one. I'm happy to share that we had 12 facilitators this year, and seven of them were teachers. Now, I will reshare my theory of action and goal for this. We started out year one where those two outside individuals, one and a half, Dr. Nobley was on the job a week, and we made him do it, right? Yeah, he knew. It was a condition of getting the job. Yeah, sign the contract and you will do HQI Live. And administrators, such as myself, facilitated it in year one. It was always the goal to gradually turn it over to teachers, leading teachers in our profession and our growth. That is what semi-defines a profession, is growing yourself and others. You don't necessarily need someone else to lead you, but leading one another, and that's the goal. So this year, we had 12 facilitators and seven were teachers, and it was a powerhouse team. We also held four classes, and we included content areas we've never included before. We did, we have had elementary math. This year, we had an elementary STEM teacher, so elementary science lab teacher, and an elementary counselor, who don't work together, by the way, two different schools. And we pulled off a STEM and SEL class. And the SEL part was about persistence and perseverance through hard learning. And what tools can you use when it gets hard? And a little bit of taking care of yourself, because the STEM topic was on the human body. So we were able to integrate that content. The second option that teachers had to visit was elementary literacy. And that is one that we've been asked about for many years, and we finally, in season four, pulled it off, where we had primary students in the area of reading and writing and the teacher facilitating an environment that highlights many of the aspects of high-quality HQI. We had a middle school ELA team co-taught by a literacy specialist and a teacher. And we had a dynamite, all-homer dynamite, a high school science teacher, chemistry, who a year ago said, "I'm going to do this." So of course, we capitalized on that. And what he was able to do with chemistry and letting go and letting kids grapple with very difficult content and allowing them to demonstrate their learning in their way was revolutionary. There were a lot of ahahas and in-the-horway conversations, and did you see that, what those kids did? It was phenomenal. And we were at Foran today, and Greg was co-facilitating professional learning for foreign teachers today. That's like, the dream is coming true, right? Empowering teachers, growing themselves, growing others. Sorry, I get really, really passionate about that. There it is. 12 in-house facilitators and seven teachers were part of that team. These are some of the pictures from season four. You will see different things. So there, in this picture, kids are working and the adult's standing around. The rule is, you can't engage with the kids. And you can't teach kids. You can't stop and try to help. It is only watching. And we're watching and we're taking notes based on some areas of focus that are identified each morning. It is six days. One day is only adults all day, and then students come for five days. These students come from all schools and represent all types of learners. And the teachers don't meet the kids until Monday morning. And they are not given a permanent record. They're not told if they are gifted. They're not told if they have an IEP. They just teach everybody who walks in that door. This year, season four focused on V2 rollout. You guys got a sneak peek in June, if you remember. So the V2 rollout was incumbent upon us to do in July, and it also happened across the entire district today. The V2 model was everywhere today. And that's the intent. We went live in July. Administrators and teacher leaders and individuals who attended HQI Live were facilitating V2 activities today. One of the key areas of focus for season four, as well as as we walk through, work through 2324, is that a form of assessment. It's eliciting the evidence of what students know and acting upon it right away. It's not the assessment, the test you give Thursday. You take home to grade, you give back Monday, and you move on. That's not the kind of assessment we're looking, we're defining. We're defining on-the-spot, in-the-moment teaching, knowing what students can and can't do, and being immediately responsive. That's going to be a focus of ours for the 2324 school year. We're also focusing on this notion of building thinking classrooms. Now, you could say, "Of course, I don't want kids to think." But sometimes, we overscuffle kids so much, they don't have to do a lot of thinking. So we're focusing on moving away from teaching kids how to student, how to figure out the system and get the grade, to really having them grapple and think. And we saw a lot of, there's a book out, actually, BTC, Building Thinking Classrooms, on some strategies that teachers can use to really empower students and have them own the thinking. Alongside that, we're also going to be focusing on some work this year. And what we did at season four is making thinking visible. So aside completing a worksheet or aside creating a diagram, what are other ways that we know what a student is thinking? How can a student demonstrate what's happening in the brain so that teachers can be responsive to that? We talked a lot in season four about the adults setting the conditions for learning. I'm going to be talking about that at convocation in the morning as well. The adults hold a lot of power on creating the conditions for kids to be successful. And so we talked about how does the adult, how does a teacher, how do administrators create conditions that allow students to take risks and try different things and learn from failure? And finally, we focused on specific teacher moves. So you will see here in this picture, teachers sitting and watching other teachers while they are engaged with students. But what happens after this, when they stop and the kids go home in season four? The teachers who have been teaching kids do a Q and A with the people who have been observing. The teachers who have been teaching kids do a Q and A with the people who have been observing. And you get this like really genuine, rich conversation on, "Hey, what were you thinking when you walked away from the kid instead of answering the question?" "Hey, what were you thinking when you answered a question with a question?" Or, "With that kid, that child over there, he was doing X. What do you think he was doing and why was he doing it? And what are you thinking you're gonna do next? And based on what you saw today, what are you planning for tomorrow?" It's a very rich conversation where the entire room, it turns into, entire room owns the lesson. And they're debriefing and deconstructing it. And we really were focusing on, what was the teacher move in that moment? When the kid got it right, what was the teacher move? When the kid was grappling, what was the teacher move? When the kid needed a resource, what was the teacher move? So this term "teacher moves," as we're nickeling it here in Milford, is really catching on. So we're talking about, what is the exact teaching strategy that was utilized at that time? So I won't read these next two slides to you, but I felt it was important for us to provide you with some highlights by area on what we are focusing on. We've already started some of this work, and some of this work is about to start, about to be rolled out in the area Equity Engagement, Early Childhood, and Student Wellness and Development. You'll see some highlights there. Happy to take questions if there are any. And then on next slide, some STEM Humanities, Fine Arts, and Media highlights from what's been happening and where we're moving in the next school year. So for 2324, we have some priorities, and these are just a handful of them. We really want to get back to aligning our professional learning. So we learned a lesson last year. We've always been about allowing schools and departments to enter into the model for HQI wherever they see is fit for their school or department. With that, we started to see some variation in practice. And our role is to try to shrink variation. So we're going to work with the Teaching and Learning Department to try to better align our professional learning across the district by providing PL each month to a leadership group, so that that can then be taken to buildings. So they'll still be personalized and individualized by building a department, but it'd just be better aligned within the same category, like for example, formative assessment. We're all starting with a message of formative assessment for the first couple of months of school. Each school department can get, enter into it where they feel like they are, but we're all doing formative assessment. We're going to continue our work with Milford Measures. We kind of took a pause on that this summer, just because of schedules and the schedule of our partner on that. So we're actually restarting that this week. And we have data to digest from last year and data to plan for this year. We're going to take on high school grading, and we're gonna, next month's highlight, actually, for the board, will be our new reassessment regulation that we'd like to really share with this board. What are we doing in high school? It is transformational. It will create some questions and wondering, so that's why we felt like we should bring it to this board for consideration. And that will be many years of work, please know that. We're not going to get it done in 2324. We're gonna, we want to look at what's redo, retake. What's the role of reflection and kids having the opportunity to redo something? We want to take a look at what's the role of the zero at the high school. So all those like sticky high school topics, we're gonna just start talking about and see if we can make any changes in that. We have a draft equity framework actually already developed. We're gonna come to the board with that in October. We're rolling out V2. And we just got a grant from the state to increase or expand our dual enrollment opportunities. So that will be a big focus for this school year. So happy to take any comments or questions from you all on professional learning curriculum.
Questions from board members. Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Kuta. This, I'm really excited that this continues to move forward and the board has, you know, supported it with funding through the budget process. I was happy to be able to go to the first round of HQI Live way back, what year was it? Do you remember?
2019.
2019. And it seems like it's progressed quite dramatically up until this point. I wonder if, a couple, a couple of things. One is, have you had people, I know you've had people who have gone from being part of the experience of HQI Live to being facilitators? I know that process has happened. What about people, have people from that first season continued to take it over the course of the last few seasons that you've done?
Yeah, so at a certain, I address the crowd every day at a certain point. And one of the days, I asked for a show of hands, who's been here, season one, two, three, four. So we do have individuals that have come every year. Remember, there are only 28 in season one. So that number will grow for repeat visitors. So there's a, there's a certain buzz about it. And we kind of create some hype, like with Amy Rizzo's help, before she took on the principalship. She and IT were creating little like promo videos and teasers and reminders, "Sign up, sign up." And as soon as you signed up, you got a cute like little travel voucher, you're on your way to HQI. You know, like, we try to create some buzz around it. And teachers are our best salespeople on it. We were at Foreign, Steve and I, and they shared the dates for next year already. We were at one school, East Shore, and Shannon put it out there and said, "Okay, guys, so take out your calendars and block it out, that's a week you can't take vacation." Like, ha-ha, you know, lol. But that, that's, like, there are some schools that are well-represented some years and other years. It's just, I'm thinking about Matheson, one year had, I think, like 12 people there. And this year, they had four. So I think it just depends on what the need is, what people's schedules are. It's the same week every year. We try to keep consistent with that. And I think it's just something that has become part of our culture, that we can expect HQI Live, third week of July. And if you're not catching it in July, we've been asked, "Can you do like something in August?" And it's hard to get people in August. So that's why we have lab sites throughout the school year, or variation. Not everyone uses that phrase. But we have opportunities for teachers to go into one another's room and do like mini HQ Live, HQI Lives. So there are other opportunities for teachers to experience, watching teachers teach and deconstructing, and talking about instructional moves, instructional practice.
Okay. Do you have a sense, I know you said that you've heard different numbers as far as how many people were there this year. Do you have a sense as to, you know, even a ballpark number as far as number of staff teachers that have had exposure to HQI Live?
You know, I need to get that number. I'll see if we can do some research and see if we can find a way to come up with a number that's not duplicative. I think you asked me this last year. Like, I think it was different. You said, "Well, how long is it gonna take you to get all teachers?" Right? I think that was the question last year. So this is a creative, different way to ask, thank you. So Ms. Griffin, if we can make note, let's see if we can find a way to go through the rosters from the four years and see what a non-duplicative number is.
That would be great. And I just have one other question, because I saw the video cameras. One of the pictures has a video camera in the back?
I meant to say something about that, thank you. So I think we engaged almost your entire team. In fact, one of your team members, Mr. Gencola, came to me and started talking about formative assessment. So even our IT department is talking HQI. So we record with everybody's permission. Everyone knows this is what we do since year one. We've been doing it four years. We record the mini lessons that the facilitators give the morning of one through five, days one through five. We record, when teachers teach kids, we record the Q and A debrief between teacher and teacher. And then on Thursday, we have a beautifully inspiring and thoughtful interview with kids. And we ask them on Thursday, "So how did this go for you?" And there is always just great feedback from kiddos. So we record that, and then we record all, if not, most, if not all, of day zero. And the reason why we do that is we actually use, and it's mainly Dr. Nobley, who sits and views them all night long and pulls out, these are great clips. Dr. Nobley's with us tonight. This would be a great clip if we want to look at questioning techniques. And now, all of a sudden, we have like a directory of examples on video of HQI. We also, Dr. Nobley also catalogs comments from kids that point to development of agency or teachers demonstrating opportunities of growth through the DRF. Like, so we have a great, great resource, our own resource catalog, to say, "So what could that look like? What is the feedback from teachers and kids?" And so we, our schools and departments have access to that throughout the year.
That's great. All right, thank you.
Ms. Zerbi?
Hi, Dr. Kuta. Hi, I'm sorry.
Hi, Ms. Zerbi.
How are you? I was wondering if you could tell me how your One Day for Day One event went? And also, if the staff members that attend that event overlap with the ones that also go to the HQI?
So I might lean on Ms. Capazan a little bit to help me with this, but I was away for the One Day for Day One, so I couldn't attend. But we chose to do something different this year. We were getting really big, and we were using a venue that, for a couple of reasons, wasn't meeting our needs. And so we decided to go to the Beardsley Zoo. And I was, I looked through the exit slips to review like so the network, and outstanding reviews. Like, people felt so valued. I remember the word "valued" often in the exit slips. People felt like they were part of a community. They were respected as learners because they were given choice on what they wanted to do, which could have been something as light as, was there something with monkeys or something? I heard some monkey stories in there.
Prairie dogs.
Yeah, prairie dogs, prairie dogs. Thank you, Ms. Griffin, yeah. So you could go and take a class on the prairie dogs, or you could, there was a class, I think, on how to veteran engage and communicate with families. So we had teachery kind of things, and then we had self-care kind of. There was a yoga class. I don't know, was there? Oh, there was a drumming. So we tried to like provide lots of different experiences depending on what adults needed. And it's open to any, any staff member. You don't have to be a certified teacher. And we require all of our new-to-Milford teachers to attend.
It was about a third new teachers, two-thirds.
Regular staff.
Existing staff, if you will.
Yeah.
And it was wonderful. It was great.
It was good.
Amazing.
What made it so amazing?
Well, just, you guys were there too, right? Just the vibe. I mean, you picked which classes you want to go to, and so you saw a different group of people at each session you went to. So you got to really, and a lot of them were small and interactive, so you got to know people really well. And the new teachers just are, they've never been exposed to anything like it. They rave about it.
I bumped into a new teacher today. She introduced herself to me, well, we knew each other at Fairfield, and she came and she says, "I have to tell you that, One Day for Day One, I went home and told, home and told my family, 'I feel like I'm in a school district who cares about me.'" That's good feedback.
And because it was outdoors, it was so different, and I think everybody really liked that aspect of it. You know, not being closed up indoors, going room to room. That's pretty standard, right?
So we've talked about different venues, maybe an aquarium, or a museum, or a state park, and trying to change enough year to year on moving away from like a country club field. And I don't know the answer to your second part as to whether there's overlap. They're distinctly different, and one is very teaching, learning-focused, and One Day for Day One is self-care. Select something that's gonna help you get in a good place to jumpstart the year.
Thank you.
If you want me to let board members know when next year's date is, huh? Ms. Will Boynton?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you for that amazing presentation, and I loved your enthusiasm, right? I think we could all feel how excited you were. And gosh, right? I mean, that's the kind of leader we need and how lucky that we have one, right? And hopefully, everyone is coming in this week equally excited. I'm thrilled to hear that in October, we're gonna have a presentation on the Equity Framework, because that was gonna be a question I was gonna ask about. But I'm just wondering for tonight, if you could just briefly talk just a little bit more about the idea of these thinking classrooms and Making Thinking Visible, and what that's all about?
Since you're here, it's okay if I bounce it over to Dr. Nobley?
Yay, yes, absolutely.
That's why you're here, right?
Yeah, this is.
Come on over.
Sure. So I mean, Dr. Kuta talked a little bit about it. So one of the amperech's that we used was Building Thinking Classrooms by Peter Loubel. So, and it meshes really nicely with our model for HQI. And so one of the things that we want to really zoom in on is what is the thinking that we're asking kids to do every day, every period? And making sure that that is the type of thinking that we have outlined in our vision of the learner, and that we're really pushing kids to really engage cognitively as much as possible. And so Making Thinking Visible piece comes into play in regards to formative assessment, because as Dr. Kuta said, what we want to be able to do is shorten the, make the response time as short as possible between getting information, feedback from the students. We tend to think about feedback, sometimes as teachers, as, you know, we give the feedback, but we need to, we're trying to flip the script a little bit here and say, no, actually, we're getting a tremendous amount of feedback from kids, like every second of the day that they're in a class. So how do we get that feedback? How do we know what a kid is thinking so that we can make the response to that thinking as a teacher, whatever that might be, whether it's asking a question, pointing them to work with another group, suggesting a resource, whatever it is, as short as possible? The research tells us that if you can make that cycle as tight as possible, then learning is gonna be the most powerful. So we're really looking at, how can we support teachers to plan for that so that they don't have to make all these? There is obviously some in-the-moment decision-making, as Dr. Kaya alluded to, but if you can go in knowing, "What's a thinking I want kids to do? How am I gonna know that they're doing that thinking? How am I gonna make that visible? And then what are some potential responses I might have depending on what that is?" That allows you to make those decisions more fluidly in the moment. So we're doing a lot of work with that, and it'll be a lot of the work this year as well. So, yeah, a lot of, so kind of taking some of the work from the bulk in HQI and really bringing it together. Milfordizing it is a verb we use a lot. We don't just take anything as-is, but that's a lot of the work that we'll be doing and supporting teachers with this year. So that answered enough of your questions.
It's so, I guess I, I guess I'm, I'm, I mean, that was a great answer. Thank you so much and very informative. But I guess I'm interested in, and I'm not sure if I'm gonna say this correctly or not, but the idea of like how a, for a student, right? How a thinking classroom is different from one that might be stressing memorization, right? Like, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I will, you can think back to some of your classroom experiences or any of that we've been in, and sometimes the teacher is working. We want the teacher to work really hard, but not in the classroom when they're teaching. We want them to work really hard in preparing the lesson and what they're doing after the lesson. But the first, people that should be working the hardest during the lesson are the actual students in the room. So sometimes, right, we're all teachers, we wanna help, we want, we want kids to learn things. We can, we can do a lot of the thinking and sometimes take some of that opportunity away from kids. So we're really trying to think, work with teachers to think about, how can we make sure that kids are the ones that are being asked to do the heavy lifting during, during instruction? So what kinds of tasks are we asking them to do? What are we putting in front of kids? How are we, how are we, how are we asking them to work? Is it individuals, with groups? Do they have to look at somebody else's thinking and make sense of that? How does that relate to their thinking? So just opportunities to really think both individually and collectively, make sense of their thinking, make sense of other people's thinking, right? Sometimes we have, the kids are working independently, they might not ever see what their classmates are doing. But one of the things that is really useful for students about Making Thinking Visible is, I can see what another person is doing, and that might allow for what we call is I can see what another person is doing, and that might allow for what we call some mobilization of knowledge. I might be able to get something from them, I might be able to go talk to that student and say, "Well, tell me about what you're doing." If that, that could actually make me rethink what I'm doing, right? So we're trying to create an environment where we're thinking is valued, where it's visible, where there's great discourse around it. And so, we're trying to see, not that that wasn't happening, but how can we optimize that so that's happening all the time for every kid, you know, during their time in school? So, taking a look at how can we work to do that together?
Thank you.
We still have memorization of facts, so don't want that to flow down there. We still believe in multiplication tables and spelling. Mr. Pellicetti?
Dr. Katia, just a quick question. Back in the winter, Dr. Fedeghan mentioned that the district was going to take part in Confrute, did you?
We did. We, I just don't know who.
But we took part.
We did. I'm going to answer that and write me to you guys. Yes, I just want to confirm, Confrute, it's the UConn's gifted and talented conference. I'm stumbling because I think there was a conversation about, should we do virtual? Should we send people? For how many days? So, let me confirm all that and.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from board members? All right, thank you so much. That was a great presentation. So happy to move on to a second reading of board policies requesting approval this evening. If we could go to three five two zero point one three, Student Data Protection and Privacy Cloud-Based Issues.
Just to remind your board members, this is the second reading of these policies, and I think there were just a few minor edits that were requested, and we looked at them for the first reading.
Nothing related to content. If you look at page four, there's a strikeout in the first full paragraph. And that's it for that policy.
There was, down below, there was one other, changing Milford Board of Education to the district.
What page, please? It was the same page.
It was just so faint.
So that was it, I think. So do we have any motion, Mr. Fowler?
I do. I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy three five two zero point one three, Student Data Protection and Privacy slash Cloud-Based Issues as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeYoung has seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a roll call vote.
Adam DeYoung?
Yes.
Catherine Ailing?
Yes.
Megan Doyle?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Tracy Erby?
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza?
Yes.
Gary Pellicetti?
Yes.
Luna Petrowski's not here. Cindy Wolf-Whiten?
Yes.
Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, board members. We'll move on to six one six three point three two. It's a new policy on service animals in the classroom. I don't believe there was any feedback, and the policy stands as you read it the first time. Right, there were no requested changes. Mr. Fowler?
I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy six one six three point three two, Service Animals in the Classroom as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pellicetti, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Adam DeYoung?
Yes.
Catherine Ailing?
Yes.
Megan Doyle?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Tracy Erby?
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza?
Yes.
Gary Pellicetti?
Yes.
Luna Petrowski's not here. Cindy Wolf-Whiten?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. And finally, for, no, not finally, almost finally, on six one six four point one two, new policy on Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome. We made one edit in the first line, age-appropriate education is added. Mr. Fowler?
I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy six one six four point one two, exemption from AIDS instruction as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeYoung has seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Adam DeYoung?
Yes.
Catherine Ailing?
Yes.
Megan Doyle?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Tracy Erby?
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza?
Yes.
Gary Pellicetti?
Yes.
Luna Petrowski's not here. Cindy Wolf-Whiten?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. And finally, policy six one seven four on summer school. We made an edit in the first line to spell out Milford Public Schools. Mr. Fowler?
I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy six one seven four, Summer School as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wolf-Whiten, seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote.
Adam DeYoung?
Yes.
Catherine Ailing?
Yes.
Megan Doyle?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Tracy Erby?
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza?
Yes.
Gary Pellicetti?
Yes.
Luna Petrowski's not here. Cindy Wolf-Whiten?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Board members, if we could move to new policies to consider, first read this evening. If we could bring your attention to six one four five point two, Extracurricular Activities. So, the thinking behind the revision here, just to share our why, is, one, we want to be in better alignment with the C I A C guidelines. They make this recommendation in their handbook for eligibility for playing sports. Second, we're finding that we really want to provide access to our students, for our students, to these extracurricular activities despite a possible having less than a C. That we believe if students are earning credits toward graduation, we should allow them access to extracurricular activities. A couple of pieces behind that on it, I think this kind of shows at least the evolution of my thinking a little bit over a career of 32 years. I think now more than ever, kids need access to things that interest them, things that might be their passion. And I think that there's a strong relationship with what they can do after school and with things that they love to their success in school. And I think it's reciprocal. Limiting access to sports to kids who are not making anything higher than a C, I think actually might be hurting some of our kiddos. That limitation access, I think, we might be seeing manifesting in either behaviors or not really motivation to academically achieve. So you'll see the strikeout of the paragraph that we don't want to include any longer on page two, where it starts with, "A student must receive a cumulative average of not less than a C with no more than one F." So, we're taking the language in this paragraph, which I'll read aloud from the C I A C handbook for eligibility. Eligibility for Fall Sports is determined by the number of credits received toward graduation at the close of the previous school year, not the fourth marking period grades. You must have received credit in at least four Carnegie units of work for which you did not previously receive credit to be eligible for fall sports participation. This may include credits earned during the summer. Thereafter, marking periods, not semester grades, are used to determine eligibility. You must take and earn passing grades in at least four quarter Carnegie units and meet the academic requirements of your school to achieve eligibility. First-time ninth-grade students will automatically be eligible for first marking period. So we're basing it on quarters, we're basing it on earning credits toward graduation, which is the goal, and we're wanting to increase and encourage participation. Now, before you ask, it only applies to sports. We decided as a high school team that we would not include just extracurricular clubs because there was an inconsistency of applying this policy to clubs. And we're finding that a lot of kids who are struggling in the classroom are really thriving in clubs, and that's where they're finding their place of belonging. So we wouldn't want, not want to limit access to clubs. So, this is the proposal in front of you. I'm sure you'll have questions and wonderings, and I'm happy to provide additional information. If we don't have answers here at this table, we could certainly provide it for you before you vote at our next meeting. Questions from board members? Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. Can you just be, can you clarify what you just said about clubs? I'm not quite sure I understand, so.
So this policy won't apply to clubs. It strictly will apply to sports.
Just this paragraph here, right?
Eligibility.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if I, if a student were, what, how is eligibility, is eligibility determined for clubs at this point? Or grades aren't taken into account at all?
Not, it is loosely.
I believe, believe it's.
I think it's inconsistent.
Okay.
And in some cases, not used at all. So what is the intent? I mean, what is, what is the district's, what, what would the district's position be on clubs? That. We would, I would want any student to access a club. So should we codify that? That there is no, well, the absence of that language speaks to that, that we're only applying an eligibility rule for participating in sports. Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. DeYoung?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
What is a Carnegie unit? It's the credit that you receive toward graduation. Can we maybe find that someplace? And I had a question on the last, the last piece of the full paragraph that's in red. So it says, "You must take and earn passing grades in at least four quarter Carnegie units and meet the academic requirements of your school." So I'm wondering what that means, you know, the academic requirements of your school. Should, should we not have the same requirements throughout the district? That is a fair edit of the school district. And what? Can you explain what that might be as a, as it differs from the Carnegie units? I'm thinking it could possibly be matriculation of classes across prerequisites. It could also include some of our attendance requirements to fulfill credits. Those are the two that come immediately in mind, Ms. Glennon, but I could talk to our high school team and get some. I, so I recognize that, you know, you took the language out of the C I A C, you know, guideline is what you had said, so it's very generic language in terms of that, and probably not that academic because it's a sports, a sporting group. But, yeah, if you could give some thought to that. We'll give, we'll come back with some examples.
On what Ms. Glennon said, I feel like by adding that second line, the academic requirements, you're kind of backtracking if we're trying to open the system up to more students and you just have four quarters of Carnegie units, and then you have to have academic requirements. I mean, academic requirements could be a two-point-oh. So, are we contradicting ourselves by having that second part of language?
So we'll bring to the next meeting clarification to that last sentence and the commonality and differences between the Carnegie unit and academic requirements, because they are both required but not the same. A Carnegie unit is very specifically defined through the state, actually, on what is required to fulfill a credit. So we'll come back with some examples and clarification. And then it could be the board's decision on whether you change that language or not. Well, the point you made on, about like attendance might be, you know, a consideration. So, I guess those are, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, it's fine. The last thing is, is in the second paragraph, Milford Public Schools, N P S, Vision of the Learner, we've used mostly the Convention of District, not N P S, if we want to change that.
Second paragraph on what page?
First page, page one.
Any other questions? Ms. Wolf-Whiten?
I'm just curious, will, could this change in policy have any kind of negative effect on students who are playing like on a combined team, like the hockey team, where you, don't we have some teams where you have kids from other districts? Am I hallucinating?
I think this policy will actually open up access.
Yeah.
It won't limit it. Our intent is to open up access.
Okay. So even though, even when we might be playing with their schools, it's not going to cause a problem?
No, same applies to them.
Okay.
It only applies to our kids, though. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I know, I understand that, but it won't affect us not being able to interact and have teams made up of multiple schools, including our students.
I don't see why it would.
No, not if the C I A C is the guiding principle.
Good point, good point, okay.
Any other questions? Mr. DeYoung?
Just one other follow-up. I was wondering, once this passes, hopefully, how, what, how do you usually get that information out to, in this case, student athletes? Because it's a relatively significant change.
Through athletic directors and coaches.
Okay. So they'll communicate to the athletes themselves? Okay.
Yeah, through counselors.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so this will come back next month for a second reading, and hopefully, the motion. Along, sorry, along with six one five three on field trips. Yes. Okay, so, we wanted to tighten up field trips a little bit because we're starting to get some requests for more out-of-state travel and even international travel, so we wanted just to revisit the policy. So I'll bring your attention to the bottom, page one. We struck that the final approval is not by the building principal, but actually it comes out of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning's office as delegated by the superintendent. So you'll see that first bullet on page two, all field trip required, it's approval by the superintendent or his or her designee. So we just shifted that authority, and had already been our practice, actually, that it was coming to the Assistant Superintendent's office. We also wanted to put some timelines in place. The third bullet on page two talks about within the state of Connecticut, making requests at least 30 days in advance, cost to be ascertained, out-of-state field trips to be approved by, with at least 60 days in advance. And then, all foreign travel field trips must be submitted to the superintendent for approval for at least 90 days ahead of time. And then, parents and guardians are responsible for obtaining trip cancellation insurance that won't be upon the district. District's not responsible for refunding students for canceled trips or to pursue reimbursement from travel agents or trip insurance carriers. The cost of field trips, students may be assessed for the cost of field trips, which includes the following items, transportation, lodging, meals and entry fees. We would allow for fundraising activities following our district policies to defray the cost of the field trip, and when the cost is considerable, a discreet arrangement can be made with the administrator for the possible assistance and payment for those individuals experiencing hardship. Certainly, we want to make sure that kids have access. Some additional considerations, the acceptance of any gratuities, discounts and/or gifts for personal use resulting from field trips is prohibited. That usually applies to adults that are chaperoning, et cetera. Any gifts, gratuities, or promotional items provided by travel companies will become the property of the district and will be used for the benefit of the trip or the school. And then finally, on page three, this disallows the use of private vehicles to and from field trips. Determination of bona fide emergencies made by the principal and/or his designee. We had that situation actually in June, when the Canada fires came. We were trying to figure out how to get kids home, and remember that the smoke descended upon us. We had to field trips out, so that is an example of a bona fide emergency. And that, those who are using their cars are, the risk is being legally liable for any injury a student sustains while in the vehicle. And then we made a change to the second bullet, that all trips are properly supervised and all safety precautions are observed. Happy to take questions.
Questions from board members? I had a couple. So Dr. Katia, on page two of three, after the second bullet where there is no change made to it, the second sentence, "Approval for any field trip may be revoked at any time by the superintendent or building principal." Is that correct, that a building principal would?
Is that correct, that a building principal would?
Would actually revoke, um, a trip or would it go up to the assistant superintendent?
It, so the first, uh, level of sign off goes through the principal. So there's no directly going to Ms. Auterri's, um, office. It's, it goes through the principal and then there's an instructional supervisor actually that signs off on it to ensure the, um, lack of duplication across trips. And then it goes to, um, Steve's office. So because the principal is in that chain of approval, the principal could, could unplug.
Okay, alright.
He, he or she just are not the final say.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Um, okay, and I just wanted to make sure that for out of state field trips and foreign travel field trips, it's your, you're the one who's deciding that? It does say superintendent, so I just want to make sure it's you.
Okay, so addis. Yeah, this is me being a little in control of things, right? Like, I don't want kids to travel to other countries without me knowing, right? And I think, um, in the past, the assistant superintendent and I have talked about out of state travel as well. So I will retain the final approval there, knowing that it'll go through Steve's office.
Um, and then on.
That makes me scared, like I, I just need to know.
Well, you can have two people decide, but somebody else can weigh in on it, so.
We can't, I mean, it can be and/or his designee, his or her designee.
My personal, uh, my personal preference would be that at least for foreign travel, that the superintendent is making the final decision.
Yeah.
So.
Because I'm thinking about model U N, sometimes we go into Manhattan. I don't want Steve to chase me down and say, can we go to New York? Or Rhode Island. Um, so can we, uh, propose a friendly amendment to the out of state one, the approval of the superintendent of schools or his, her, designee?
Yes. I would.
And then leave foreign travel alone. Okay?
That would be fine with me. Um, and then on page three of three, if you could just, um, look at the, the bullets, um, and come and maybe consolidate them. I think there's some duplication between the second and the fourth bullet.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Erby?
One questions, no questions, um, page one, two and three. If the last line, they are subject to final approval, was crossed out for the cultural enrichment trips, should it be crossed out for the recreational trips in number two?
Yes, absolutely. Say, should I catch?
Yes, Ms. Doyle.
Um, what kind of trips are you discussing trip cancellation insurance for? Are you talking out of state, like, when it was, what, or at, in, uh, out of state or international travel? I mean, if we're going to Stu Leonard's in Norwalk, I don't think we need insurance?
That would be accurate. Um, and probably a trip that we've taken.
Oh, yes, very great. I would care.
It's mostly, um, trips that require admission fee. So even possibly, um, the museum, the aquarium, the science, uh, center in Hartford, right? Kids are paying admission ahead of time, et cetera. So I don't know that we're taking insurance out on that, but if there's an overnight trip or and we're talking about, um, a group of kids going to Italy. Um, so that's more the higher, uh, further away travel with higher costs.
Can you give me an idea of what kind of activity, fundraising activities are consistent with policies as they are now?
I could tell you some that are not.
That's fine as well.
Uh, we, we, I don't know if I can to talk about them off the top of my head, but we have some restrictions on how money is collected, where they can advertise, where fundraisers can and can't take place. That's been a conversation recently. Appropriate venues for fundraisers, where there are adults and kids. Uh, where, uh, what bank accounts could be used to deposit monies, um.
Cash handling procedures, um, you know, the way they collect the money, how it, where it needs to go at the end of the day. There's a whole bunch of, uh, different protocols that are in place for that.
We can't do anything that's in competition with the lunch program.
Yes.
Some fundraisers are unrelated to that.
Okay.
So there is, there's a wide range of different types of fundraisers that could exist. Um, like Dr. Kutaia said, there are some that we would, you know, put a stop to. But, um, when, when they are raising funds, we would make sure that they're consistent with Milford Public School practices that we're allowing.
Okay. And so say a booster club wanted to donate, raise money for a trip if it's going to Italy or something like that. That is parent fundraisers, are they still regulated by that same, or if it's?
No, so booster clubs and P T Os and P T As have a, uh, different set because they're at arm's length. So it's more about the student fundraisers that we have more controls over, um, in terms of the day to day operations of what we will allow and won't allow. Um, booster clubs typically, you know, have their own separate bank accounts that are separate from ours. And they engage in fundraisers, still needs approval from us, but they have a different, um, layer of approval than the ones that students are typically doing throughout the school day.
Okay, thank you.
We do work closely with, uh, most and all of them. Sometimes on finessing some language or changing some graphics that are more student friendly. Um, and, and considering some venues that would be, um, more appropriate for students. So while they do run by their own rules, we have worked with them closely to, to reconsider and some language and suchnot, so.
Okay, great. And then the last comment is, um, same consistency in the first paragraph of Milford Public Schools district that we've done throughout the other programs. Um, approval, approved curriculum of the district. So just Milford Public Schools parentheses, district.
Via the first sentence?
Yeah, yeah.
On page one. Okay, thank you.
Um, going back to the cancellation insurance is, so is the responsibility for obtaining the trip cancellation insurance if they so desire or are they required to take out trip cancellation insurance? The way I read it was that, you know, if you, the, the district will not be refunding your money. If you want to have that level of security, you need to take out
Right.
the insurance. So should that be specified or is it okay the way it is? If they, so parents or guardians are responsible for obtaining trip cancellation insurance if they so desire?
If they so desire, select, choose. When available.
Cause it's not always going to be available.
Right. When avail, um, so we'll put in language that suggests it's their choice and as available.
Okay, okay.
And are we providing the vendor for that insurance or do they have to find it themselves?
It's usually connected to
Trip.
the offer, the company that, that they're making.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's, mostly comes into play for the foreign, you know, if they're taking for the foreign trip and, which is usually done through a.
Well, I remember as COVID hit, our kids were supposed to go to Disney and perform.
Or something like that, yeah, a longer, farther way.
They were saying, yes, you can travel. We were saying, no way, they're not traveling. It was as COVID hit, um. So we got a postponement and then they said you have to use it by a certain time or lose all your money. And I don't know that insurance was provided at that point. So parents were looking to us and we're looking to them. And so in that case, it wasn't provided, like it wasn't an option. It was go or lose, like, you know, like when you book a ticket most of the time. So I think the when available and by choice of the parent, um, is good language to add here. But it also specific that we're not in the hub for refunding.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, so this policy will also come back for September business meeting for adoption. In second meeting.
Sorry, we're just confirming something. Thank you, for your patience. Okay, so let's go to the preliminary, preliminary, preliminary report. I think that there is, um, an additional document being handed out. So I'll just wait for everybody to get that. So there's, um, only one difference between the document that was in the packet and this. And that is under the name of each school, it is corrected to say staff for twenty-three, twenty-four as opposed to twenty-two, twenty-three. So that's the only difference. If you made notes on your other document, they're the same in number. So I will, um, start by level. At the elementary school, we currently have two thousand four hundred sixty-seven students enrolled. In our budget book, uh, we projected two thousand four hundred thirty-eight. So a little, a little higher than that. At the middle school, we have one thousand one hundred eighty-two students enrolled. In our budget book, we projected one thousand one hundred ninety. At the high school, we have one thousand six hundred twenty-nine kids enrolled. And in the budget book, we projected one thousand six hundred forty-six. To give us a total of current enrollment of five thousand two hundred seventy-eight students compared to our projection of five thousand two hundred seventy-four students. Pretty close. But it's, it's, um, preliminary, preliminary, preliminary. So I will tell you, um, some numbers that are coming in, um, that's catching our eyes. Half ten. Uh, we projected at two forty-five, they're at two sixty, so a little higher, double digit increase there. At Orange Avenue, we projected three fifty and they're sitting at three sixty-seven. And at Orchard Hills, we projected three fourteen and we have three thirty-two. Orchard Hills has, uh, been consistently increasing in numbers over the last couple of years. Um, the middle school numbers are pretty darned close to our projections as, um, are the high school numbers. So we're keeping an eye on it. A lot happens over the next couple of weeks. Um, I don't like to share numbers actually until we see the whites of their eyes, but, um, that'll happen in a couple of days. And then we do get, uh, a little bit of enrollment, um, registration after Labor Day. So. Numbers are looking good. Classrooms are ready. They're around today. Lots of excitement. Even pumpkins ready to open. So any questions about the enrollment report?
Mr. Deon?
Thank you. Um, I don't want to jump the gun on the facilities report because I know we're likely to see that soon.
Good.
But I'm curious if there is a, you know, three sixty-seven seems like an extremely high number compared to most of the other schools outside of Orchard Hills. I'm wondering if there is a maximum capacity for, or what the maximum capacity is for our elementary schools.
I, I think we're, we're going to find out.
Yeah, we're going to find out and we're, we're actually in the process of doing that right now, as you mentioned, with the facility study. Um, as of right now, we are not maxed out with that number. So we're able to accommodate them. Um, and there's, there's no instance where we couldn't fit that number of students in there. So we are able to do so. Okay, that's great. Thanks.
Other questions? We will get updated figures at the, um, October business number.
Based on October first enrollment, which is the official number that the state looks at. And then we build budgets and suchnot on the October first number, so. If there's anything, uh, extraordinary, I'll be sure to update the board before then.
Thank you.
And with your permission, board, we'd like to turn things over to Ms. Eileen Postage as she provides us with our annual food service report.
Good evening.
Hello.
This is the, um, financial report for the entire year for food service. Um, once again, we had a successful year. We served, um, almost seven hundred thousand one meals this year. That's about thirty-eight hundred meals a day. Um, almost every month of the year, we served all meals free to all students, free of charge, which was awesome. Our participation was excellent. We had, um, you know, a lot of kids, a lot of families and kids took advantage of having free meals for all, both at breakfast and lunch. So, um, in addition, we also got some support from the, from our, um, from the government with, we are funded, we're self-funded. We, we got most of our income from reimbursements, the federal reimbursements and state support this year. The state, I think through federal funding, um, took care of the portion that parents would normally pay for meals. And that, um, worked out really well for us. And we also received some, some money to help us purchase food and supplies that, that were, um, very expensive this year as it has been through the pandemic. So, um, some of the, some of those supports are going to continue into next year, but some are, are, are going away. So for next year, we're, we're able to serve all students free breakfast. And we can, we're going to have free meals for those that are eligible for free and reduced price meal. And then parents would go, will go back to, if they don't qualify for free or reduced, they would pay the, um, pay the regular lunch price like they, like they used to. Um, so the, the bottom line for this year, we, um, we had, we made about almost four hundred thousand dollars. And, and that's a lot of money for us. But the reason that it, um, one of the reasons is because of the higher reimbursements, the higher support, the grants that we received. And, um, it's also, um, I don't spend money unless I have it and I'm confident we're going to continue to have it. So, um, we will be spending some of that money on, uh, some equipment that is getting old. Um, things that I replaced when I first started working here in the dark ages. Um, it was new and, but I walk around now and it's getting old. So, um, it needs replacing. It's not new anymore. So that's what I save the money for. So whatever, all the money that we earn, we can carry it over in our program. And then we can, um, put it back into the program, whether it's towards equipment or food or supplies, whatever we need. So, um, and we need a cushion so that we can pay our bills. Like we were spending two, two hundred fifty or three hundred thousand dollars a month last year. So four hundred thousand dollars doesn't sound like that much when you, when you need that kind of fund, those kind of funds to pay your bills, pay the payroll and the pay for food and supplies. So we're good this year. I'm happy with the way it, it ended. And usually you are too, because we are self-supporting. So looking at next year, um, it's going to be a little harder. I think participation might fall a little bit because, um, parents that were per, having their kids purchase meals every day, five days a week, they may go back to saying, you know, you can choose three or four, three, two or three a week, something like that. But we'll see. It's still a good meal. It's a good nutritional value. And financially, it's a good, I think, a good, a good deal for parents as well. Um, some things for next year that, one thing that's not going away is the, um, they're still giving us some supply chain funds. So that'll help our food cost. Um, they're going, we're going to, they're going to decrease the reimbursement rates that they gave us. They've had boosted them up through the pandemic. So we get reimbursed for all, all meals, whether it's at a different, they're all at different levels, whether it's free, reduced or paid. So they're going to decrease our, um, paid reimbursement significantly. Um, they had bumped it up to seventy-seven cents a meal. Now it's going back down to forty cents a meal. So that, there are some things that are definitely, um, not going to move in the right direction for next year that we're going to have to react to. But we, I did look for, I looked for, keep my eye open for some grants that we can get. There's, I applied for a fifty thousand dollar equipment grant. We did get a, um, grant for using local produce. That's going to, that's about eight thousand dollars that will encourage us to reach out to local farmers within whatever, you know, Connecticut and outside of Connecticut, but more local. And, um, so there's, so, so those are the grants we've been working on. We also got a smoothie brand for all the element, all the schools. So every school is going to have its own immersion blender, like huge, like industrial strength, not just, not one like that you might have at home. And, and we started using.
Parsons too?
Parsons too? No, they had to have been serving breakfast last year. This time, but, um. This time, but um but anyways, we uh we did use them at H Q I, so the um we were able to teach our staff or some of our staff how to use them and test some flavors out on the teachers that attended. So um so that's what we're doing. Um everything we have going on next year is um on the website, the prices, the how to how parents can pay. They're gonna they have to get back into that mode. And we're gonna we will make it work again next year.
We always do.
Yes, I always do. You're right. So does anyone have any questions?
I'm just I'm just curious, how much is school lunch these days?
These days is um elementary is gonna be three thirty-five, middle school is three sixty and high school is three eighty-five.
Mr. DeYoung?
Um I have the same question, but I'm curious how that differs from um twenty nineteen twenty twenty or twenty nineteen, when the last time we were charging for meals?
It has gone up. Um I don't have the exact figures, but I can get them for you, but we did increase them for last year because I don't know if you remember, but we were given some grant money last year and it we had the let me think, it was about seven hundred thousand dollars to be able to support families and continue free meals until it ran out and it ran out in January. And so parents had to go back to paying in January and February. And uh so the the prices that I have for this year are the same as last year. I didn't increase them from last year, although I know I did increase them from before the pandemic.
Okay, um and then I wanted to ask you, you mentioned the grant that you got for uh local produce. And a couple of times, I think, actually, it's the a program I what if I'm remembering correctly, was that Matheson? Where they had a farm-to-table competition with the kids and um like some sort of Top Chef competition.
Pumpkin.
Oh, was it pumpkin delight? Okay. Um is that is that are you gonna continue to do that program and expand it or?
Um I would like to. I would like to. I um that was one of the that was kind of a big thing for us to do. I think um it was a nice competition where the kids submitted recipes um that they that we could we chose uh and had the kids come in the kitchen and maybe we made I assigned a staff person with each one. We provided all the ingredients and we were able to make the make enough of that recipe in order to have a taste test the next day with all the the entire school. So we made three different uh three different recipes and had them had samples for everyone that wanted to try. So um I would like to do that again, but like for a long time I thought of all doing things the same at all the schools, but if you know, we need if I can target one at a time, I can, you know, you can do those kind of things. I don't think I could pull that off system-wide, like same day or any anything. But um it was I thought it was really good and the kids got excited and my staff got excited working with the kids. It was a really, really good, it was a really good event, I think.
Yeah, seemed excellent. Thank you.
But I will do that at other schools.
Okay.
So speaking of the grants, you mentioned that you you said you had applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant.
I did.
Did you get it or you were sure yet?
They're reevaluating them in September, so hopefully.
Okay, and what was that one for?
What was that? What would that pay for? Um I put in to use it to buy two new coolers for each high school on the serving line. I only bought four refrigerators on the serving line, fifty thousand dollars. Used to go farther, fifty thousand dollars, I guess, but um but the reason I think I'm gonna get it is because they specifically said it's not limited by need, because a lot of grants go to the most needy.
Right.
And we're not a they're the most needy and we we don't meet the threshold usually, but this specifically said it's for if anyone can apply, so I I am hopeful.
So there had been some federal legislation to lower the threshold required by a community to qualify for the community um free and reduced lunch. Did that pass that legislation?
I am not sure that passed or not.
I know we we missed we wouldn't have qualified. We I cause I was kind of watching that and I think we we were just just slightly over the threshold. I think it was thirty percent over the threshold, but I wasn't sure if it had even passed or not. I was trying to find out.
It 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 that was kind of confusing um legislation, because it sounds like, oh, if you, you know, you meet that threshold, then we can afford to, you know, the government's gonna pay for free meals forever. But what it did, what the the only thing that that does is say you can apply and you can participate, but you have to come up with the money to support the free meals some other way. It didn't guarantee that you were going to get
Oh, okay.
Uh the you're not gonna get pre-re reimbursements for all meals. They would give you some weighted average and our weighted average would not cover the cost of everyone to have free meals, so it was it's a little deceiving. It sounds like a really good idea, but um I don't know that it passed and I in a in a big day, I'm not sure we would want to participate.
Right, okay. Thank you for that information. Any other questions? Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Um how is staffing and being able to find enough labor and things like that?
This year it's really good. It's it's going really well. I actually have had more people apply for jobs than I've I've had in years. So we have a good long sub list. We fill the jobs and I'm I'm very pleased.
Any other questions? You thank you, Ms. Faustic.
Just go ahead and maybe just just add one thing about our food service department.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Faustic for her leadership in our food service department. Her and her team work tirelessly to make sure that our students are fed every day, so we really appreciate you. As a former principal, I know just how collaborative her and her team are to help support the needs of the students, so just wanted to thank you for all your hard work and leadership in the department.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Ditto. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Board members will go to the next item under the superintendent's report, uh handing things over to Ms. Kapasna for the talent management and development.
Thank you. So in my monthly report from the talent management and development department, you see that we have some job postings, personal recommendations, retirements, resignations, terminations and stipend appointments. It's quite a hefty report as it can be this time of year, but I'm pleased to inform you all that as of four thirty, we we hired another teacher today. So we have forty-nine new teachers and just four openings remain for teaching staff for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. And uh this is this is some pretty typical numbers and as Ms. Faustic men- mentioned, we're also happy with the amount of people, the amount of candidates, the quality of candidates. It's been a busy summer, but unlike last summer when we were scrambling, this time we had to throw a job job fair together at the last minute. We haven't had the need to do that. I think we need three more pairs and uh four more teachers, so and we're prepared to cover those those openings with subs and whatnot in the beginning of the year. And hopefully we'll be able to fill those positions quickly into the new year, early in the new year. We did have, um I know the question came up about an art oh art position opening, which we did did just fill. And of course, we had a teacher that we had unfortunately had to lay off at the end of June and we did contact that individual per contract and made that offer for him to come back, but he fortunately for him, unfortunately for us, had already found a secured a job over in trouble, so he was thankful to get the call, but he won't be rejoining us this year and ever now in the future.
It um just to reiterate, the forty-nine new teachers were to fill openings from others leaving, correct? We're not.
Correct, yes, yes, that not brand new. Yep, that would be, yeah, that'd be way too many.
Yeah. Mr. DeYoung?
And also, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that our retirements, whatever I reported in June, that number actually stayed the same. We didn't get hit with any July or August or day before school. Retirements, I mean, it can happen. It has happened in the past and I was pleased that that really did not happen this year. Rare, but yeah.
Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. Um I was curious um why there are why there's chorus teachers that are being what the what the stipend is for for the elementary chorus teacher?
Okay, so that was something that was carried over from the end of the year that we didn't tend to during the school year that we had to.
But why do we why do we stipend the chorus teachers?
It is for, let's see, when teachers have outside of the school day responsibilities such as concerts. I I think we looked at the number of concerts that they had and there was some.
It's per contract?
Per contract, yeah, yep.
So the reason that there's not like strings teachers is because that was accounted for previously?
They had already received their stipends, so sometimes when there's late
Yeah.
discovers discoveries of what we, you know, forgot to do or didn't didn't get to come in towards the end of the year, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Other questions from board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
And to finish up the superintendent's report, we'll turn things over to Mr. Brennan for our dispersion report.
Thank you, Dr. Kataya, Ms. Glennon, members of the board. So in your package, you'll have a list of all the district's dispersments over the amount of fifteen hundred in the month of July. Uh with having said that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have with this person.
Just a note for the board, um at our leadership meeting, we gave permission to stop with the yellow highlighting since all that was left was some of the um the stories, the trailers, so. Any questions from board members? Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Um there's a line here for, I know we have to cover all special education costs and evaluations. Are these uh special ed psych evaluations per student or multiple students within those line items? For example, with uh Dr. Michael Kaplan, um that twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars.
I I can speak to that.
Sure.
So he um conducts psychiatric evaluations for students and that's for several students. Um and it just came through at that one time when we got his invoice.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions? Okay, seeing none.
That finalizes my report, Ms. Glennon.
Thank you, Dr. Kataya. We go on to consent agenda. Mr. Fowler?
We make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves consent agenda item minutes for consideration, uh July tenth, twenty twenty-three, business meeting as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
Second, but Mr. DeYoung, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Adam DeYoung?
Yes.
Catherine Ailing?
Yes.
Megan Doyle?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Tracy Erby?
Yes.
Emily McDennessouza?
Yes.
Gary Pellicetti?
Yes.
Una Petrowski is not here. Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Motion passes, none, so I'll leave you.
More comment? Any comment from members of the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Your second?
Second.
If there are no uh dissension on adjourning, we'll adjourn at eight forty-two P M. We'll see everybody in.